Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, January 7th, 2025. I'll call this meeting to order and ask that you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your Father, for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Jay David Reed.
Present.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Judy Ann Files.
Present.
Ed Yuliberry.
Here.
Peter Phillips.
Present.
Grayson Vidmer.
Present.
Doug Glassbell is absent. All city councilors and our youth council representatives are present.
Thank you. And Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, do we have any changes or additions, deletions to?
No, sir, we do not.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the time for call for public comment for non-agenda items. I'd like to see a show of hands of those wishing to speak tonight. Three of you? Okay. Then I will need to read what we normally read at the time for call, at the time of public comment. The call for public comment agenda items is a time when concerned members of the community may publicly voice their concerns and discuss items of interest. Please note that no formal action will be taken on the matters raised during this time. Comments made during this time should be addressed to the council and pertain to matters of at least general importance to the city and its operations. Please be aware that neither city council nor city staff are expected to respond or engage in discussion or debate. Please refrain from any personal attacks and disagreements, personnel, unemployment matters, the use of profanity, or ethnic, racial, or gender-oriented slurs, as they may be considered disorderly conduct, which violates state or local law. And I will just remind each of you that you're limited to three minutes, and so who would like to go first? Yes, ma'am? Please come forward.
Thank you for listening. My name is Jana Powell, and I'm a citizen of Montrose. I've been here for about five years. I just want to say that I'm very, it's in disagreement with your decision that you made last month about your ordinance to ban sheltering for the homeless. And I think, you know, according to the Supreme Court, they think it's unusual, it's not unusual or inhumane and cruel behavior to do this, and I disagree completely. I, you know, there has been a one-third increase in the homeless population in the United States over the last two years. That's extraordinary. And so this calls, I believe, for extraordinary solutions, and this is not the solution we need, because it is putting people out on the streets without any cover, they cannot fend for themselves, that have no cover. And from what I understand, they can't have a blanket, they can't have a sleeping bag, let alone a tent. And you did this right before the cold season. You didn't give them a chance to prepare or leave town to go to a warmer climate. And I think that is very cruel. I do, I, I, I see a lot of these homeless people, I interact with them on a daily basis. I'm through my addiction treatments with the jail and the Shepherd's Hand, and I talk to them, and I've met them. And I can tell you, I, there was one guy, he was walking back and forth down the street, just back and forth. It was night. And I asked him why, where's your, you know, why you keep wa, he's like, I gotta keep walking, or else I'll fall asleep. And if I fall asleep, they'll ticket me. And if they ticket me, I'll go to jail. I don't have the money. And if I go to jail, I'll get a felony, and I won't get, be able to get a job. So it's a cycle. It's not, it's, it's contributing to the problem. It's not the solution. I beg of you, please, give these people back their shelter for the winter. Be humane.
Thirty seconds.
And then we have to figure out a solution, a real solution, where we have a permanent encampment with a rehabilitation program. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next, please.
I'm John Brown, Montrose resident. I am coming again to encourage the council to approve a declaration making Montrose a non-sanctuary city. I've heard all the public excuses for not making a non-sanctuary such declaration is already covered under some other law, but I have yet to see or even had a reference to that particular legislation. Then there was the City Rights Act, Civil Rights Act of 1964, Article 12, I believe it was, the reference saying that a non-sanctuary status would be discrimination towards immigrants. Sanctuary cities seem to attract illegals, acts of violence, take services away from current recipients, like our own homeless population and military veterans, who are equally in need of legal. Illegal is illegal. To aid and abet a person who has violated the law makes all the city officials, including governors, mayors, city council members, police, and sheriff's departments, equally guilty under the law. To discriminate against someone based on col, color, sex, religious beliefs, countries of origin, sexual prefercy, preferences, is indeed applicable under the Civil Rights Act. But singling out someone who is guilty of a criminal act is not discrimination. Helping those in need is a very honorable act. All persons should be helped when needed, whether it is medical or other needy state situations, including illegals. We need the illegals handed over to the authorities to be reinstated with their homeland. Legal immigration is what our country was built upon. All the hundreds of thousands of immigrants that passed through Ellis Island have become American citizens. They have added to the overall culture of this country. They have joined our military to defend our country from enemies, domestic and foreign. They have become key groups within our nation. Most of us can trace our ancestry to a time when immigration was done within the law. A nation without borders is not a nation. Why do we go to other countries and build borders while at the same time we tear down our own borders? Not only do we need to declare Montrose a non-sanctuary city, but we should consider legis, legislation that will support the policies of our president-elect. There will come a time when you, as our city fathers, will have to answer.
Thirty seconds, sir.
Why you disobeyed federal law, and you will be held accountable. You should know the lead, you, we should follow the lead of Council Rock, Colorado, in putting forth a resolution expressing strong support for our president-elect Trump's immigration policy and our willingness to fully cooperate with federal immigration officials in implementing these policies. Thank you very much. We, the people. John Brown.
Next, please.
Cindy Olinghaus from Montrose, and I just want to say, I completely agree with John Brown, and I hope you will move on this. Thank you.
And did we have anyone else? Seeing no further.
I'd like to third that.
Pardon me?
I'd like to third that.
Well, you please come up to the podium and identify yourself by name and where you reside.
My name is Michael Badiaco, and I would like to third what was just said by John Brown.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda, item number six, is the consent agenda. Matters contained on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, ordinary matters, and are not subject to separate consideration unless council elects to remove any one of the items on the consent agenda. That being said, if there are no requests to remove items from the consent agenda, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. And that passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, item number seven, city council consideration of Resolution 2025-01, a resolution of the city council of the city of Montrose, Colorado, authorizing the filing of a co-responder program grant through the Colorado Department Health of Health Services to secure funding to sustain the Behavioral Health Co-Responder Program with Access Health. And to present that, we have Deputy Police Chief, Mr. Tim Cox.
Thank you, Mayor. There we go. Thank you, Mayor, and City Council. As you just stated, we're seeking approval for ability to apply for a Colorado Department of Human Services co-responder grant. This is for a grant amount up to 301,000. It's, we're applying for it to sustain our current co-responder program. Little bit of background on it. In the past, since our inception of this program with our partners through Access Health, which used to be the Center for Mental Health, we used to apply for the grant, or they did, through the Behavioral Health Administration, which is no longer being allowed, the grants no longer flowing through that, has to go through a governmental agency. So that's why we're changing it this year and asking for your approval to be able to apply for this grant. If we're able to apply for the grant, we're going to be able to keep this important co-responder program running. We're in partnership with four other law enforcement agencies, Montrose County Sheriff's Office, Montrose, I'm sorry, our, Montrose Police Department, Delta County Sheriff's Department, and Delta PD. We also support other agencies like Alata PD, Peonia, Hotchkiss, and Cedar Edge as well with the program. Something that I didn't cover yesterday in work session, but I wanted to make sure and cover today, this grant is a pass-through grant through the city of Montrose, Montrose Police Department, which will actually go to Access Health, who also will maintain and pretty much track the grant for us, all the stats that are needed to keep the grants up and running and successful. The grant period takes effect, if we are approved, to receive the grant, July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, at 2026. And we are recommending that, the staff recommends approval by city council to authorize the submission of the co-responder grant through the department, Colorado Department of Health and Services. This would be very instrumental in, like I said, providing resources to our community members. This grant also lessens use-of-force incidents, custodial arrests, and then in the end, just makes a safer community. So we do appreciate it. Yeah, happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Any questions for Chief Cox?
I have a question. I didn't know what to call you. I suddenly went, do I call you Deputy Chief Cox? I've known Tim forever. Sorry. Please explain what a co-responder is.
Sure. We partner, like I said earlier, we are in partnership with Access Health. So we have a full-level licensed mental health clinician, master-level clinician, that responds to calls for service with an officer, or sometimes they'll respond by themselves if it's safe to do so, and do follow-up work. And in return, what they're able to do, there's only three people that can write an M1 hold, so if somebody is in a mental health crisis and they're, could be a harm to themselves or others, a doctor, a co-responder with a mental health master-level experience, or a police officer. And granted, we have very well-trained officers in this, but our co-responders ultimately the best option to have respond. While we respond together, that co-responder is able to stay on scene, provide those resources, while officers are able to clear from the scene and go handle their calls for service. So it's been an excellent program. I mentioned yesterday just some rough stats. I think our co-responder here in Montrose, or in the city, handled over 722 incidents or calls for service. So that lessens law enforcement's time with them, keeps people out of the legal system, and keeps people out of hospitals, too. A lot of programs, if we didn't have a co-responder program, we would be seeing a lot more people go into the ER to receive those resources.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
The one comment I'd like to make is that, like any other pass-through grant that we deal with, this has zero financial impact on the city of Montrose, that this has been a grant program we have applied for, for years, to sustain and grow this co-responder program. It's just shifting who gets to apply.
Correct.
So it's just a, it's a kind of one of those housekeeping issues almost for us. And this is a fantastic program, and as you say, it allows our co-responders to deal with some of these crises and free up our officers to do the job that we actually hired them for.
Correct. And it, like you said, it's affecting a lot of our partnering communities who we work very well with, and that's been excellent, too, and it's a great, successful program. So we appreciate it, and thank you for allowing us to apply for it.
Is there any public comment? Yes, sir.
John Brown, Officer Cox, can you tell me if this would be?
We, I'm sorry, but we don't allow back and forth.
I'm sorry?
We're just taking public comment, we're not allowing back and forth. If you have something.
I'm curious whether.
Excuse me, Mr. Brown, can I finish, please? If you have something that you'd like to take up with Deputy Chief Cox, he'd be happy to talk to you. But our tradition here is you make the public comments, and we don't have dialogue between staff, council, and the commenter.
Okay. As a co-responder, would this be a person that could respond to help some of the homeless people that have problems, mental problems, trying to get themselves situated, trying to get themselves coordinated and organized? I used to volunteer down at Shepherd's Hand, and the amount of people that were always there that had a lot of problems, they needed somebody that could be with them, that could help them. There are some that had true mental issues, and they were, they had their own source of problems. But those that are homeless because of things beyond their control, it makes it very difficult. And to have somebody that can co-respond with them and to possibly have empathy or solutions for their situations would be very helpful.
And if, if Mr., if Deputy, excuse me, Deputy Chief Cox doesn't have your contact information, feel free to give it to him, and I'm sure he'll contact you.
I'd be happy to do that. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other public comment? If not, I would entertain a motion, please.
Move to adopt Resolution 2025-01 as presented.
Second. Moving on to item number eight on the agenda, the city council consideration of $4,558,427.31 in expenditures for construction of a public works facility, irrigation, relocation, and preliminary site fill project. This includes the award of a construction contract to Williams Construction in the A survey and engineering support contract to Delmont Consultants in the amount of $116,500, and up to $65,000 in direct expenditures for a job trailer and survey equipment to support the project. And for that, I will call on our city engineer, Mr. Scott Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No changes since we talked about this at the work session, but I'll do a quick overview of the project for anybody joining in for the first time. So this is, you know, the one of, step one of 10, step one of 20, maybe, for the overall Rio Grande and public workshop site projects, kind of the start of the ma, or the first major construction project and the start of the construction side of what's been a, you know, decades-long planning project. So up on the screen here is an overview of the area, just to give an overview of what's, you know, coming down the pipe with this and other future projects that are being worked on. So this is the extension of Rio Grande between East Oak Grove and River Landing, down to the new, by the new ambulatory care center. The city's master plan has envisioned this connection for the last several iterations, several decades. The city has successfully, last fall, or I guess 2023 now, winter of 2023, we were able to secure the last property acquisition required, which also doubled as the site for the public workshops. So at the north end of this alignment here, which, this is turned on its side, Stovers is on the left side of the screen, River Landing is on the right. Kind of the first piece of all this is getting the public workshop site and the first phase, and set up with the fill for the first phase of Rio Grande. So Jim will speak a little bit more about the public work site and all of its history and how we got there. But on the construction side of things, this first project will fill that site to get it pad-ready for construction of the new public workshop, and fill the first phase of the Rio Grande corridor, which will extend from East Oak Grove to about Anderson Road. As part of the public workshop site, that first phase will be constructed, and then independent of that, the city is pursuing federal funding to finish the Rio Grande corridor. Ideally, those would happen on a similar timeline, but they're such large projects, you're looking at probably another 15 million or so to finish Rio Grande, and we're pursuing federal funding on that to help make that a reality concurrent with these other projects going on. But, but in any case, in either project, the site fill and initial work that we're talking about with this contract needs to take place at the northern end here, along this orange-shaded area and along the Rio Grande corridor. So that project was put out to bid on November 4th. We opened bids on November 26th. We received bids from, trying to remember, six contractors in this case, so a lot of interest. You get these large projects that are greenfield construction, a lot of fill, relatively straightforward. We get a lot of bidding interest in those, and that's reflected here. You can see a pretty good spread and a really good bid. So the lowest bid was a little over a million less than the number-two bid was Williams Construction. We've worked with them on quite a few jobs, most recently on the 6,700 road extension. Always had good work from them, never had any problems, so we're comfortable making a recommendation to do the contract award to Williams. The other expenditures, as we talked about, there's portions of the survey that are more efficiently done by the designer, some of the more verticals stake out for gravity sewer systems, sidewalks, things of that sort, and the aerial drone surveys, which we don't keep the software in-house to process those. We are, we would look to hire Delmont Consultants for, which they were the designer on the public workshop site fill plans. We're also looking to put a job trailer out there, which includes the trailer itself and temporary power, a product of this scale, and then moving into the vertical construction side of things, we would just leave that job trailer on-site. So it makes sense to get that established for the project now. We're also looking to purchase a survey unit. There's portions of the project that will be surveyed by the city's engineering staff. Because of the nature of this project, it'll have full-time inspection and tie up the unit full-time, and we have all our other projects that we need our survey unit for that are going on this summer. We looked at renting one for the duration of this project, but it was cheaper, actually, to just buy one. And so that's why the survey unit expenditure is in there as well.
Quick clarification, we're just renting the trailer, we're not purchasing the trailer?
Correct. Yep, great clarification. So the trailer is rented on a monthly basis. It's not cost-effective to purchase one at the, in this, for this case of the duration, because the trailers are so expensive. The nice other part about the survey unit is that'll, we've had so much construction going on that having two after this project will serve us well, because we've gotten to a point where juggling one around all the various projects, even without this one, has become a challenge, as construction gets bigger and bigger every year. So those all sum up to the 4.558 million being requested. The project itself is scheduled to start as soon as possible. They're looking, if everything's approved, to start next week. All of the work will be off, off of East Oak Grove, so we don't anticipate any traffic impacts to the motoring public. At some point, there will be some crossings and some work along the recreation trail there, which I will go to the second sheet here. So this is the site fill area in the center of the project. The green area is highlighted in green, or yeah, highlighted in green, showing the rec trail alignment. So a portion of the site, because it's fill and getting regraded, the, will be in conflict with the existing rec trail as it sits. This is an area we've been eyeing to widen the rec trail. This is north of the bridge crossing there. If you remember, that caught on fire about five to six years ago. It's generally undersized for the use that it gets, so this is our opportunity, since we have to regrade the area anyway, we will rebuild that to full rec trail standard, width standards, at 10 feet. And then the rec trail along this side here, once this site fill work is done, the eastern, or the western side of the Rio Grande extension, which is this kind of dash line through the middle here, kind of hard to see, but that'll all be established, and there won't be any work, more work taking place along there. And so we thought, let's not rebuild it where it was, let's rebuild it in its ultimate location, where it's going to follow Rio Grande and reestablish all those connections and never have to touch it again, hopefully. So the product also includes that sidewalk work there. Kind of hard to see on this figure, I'll zoom in a little bit, but the project also includes some irrigation relocation here. There's a irrigation ditch that goes right through the middle of the site, that will be getting piped, and to control the water on the site, also, we don't want a ditch running right through the middle of the new public works facility to make a pretty efficient, inefficient use of the land. So that's getting relocated. But all of that work, again, will take kind of place outside of the trail. There will be some isolated trail closures. We're working with, our trail impacts and work alongside the trail, we're working with, because that's kind of a dead-end area, that's, there's really no viable trail detour, we're working with the contractor to try and keep that open. If not the entire project, as much as possible, limit that closure to a very short duration. So ideally, if we, there was a contract maximum we put in there, but just as a, as a safeguard against them, you know, claiming they would have to close it the entire time. But we, we hope to keep that down to, there, if, if we keep it open, there may be detours around on the trail side of things, or we run them through a different corridor, all work is taking place, but ideally, they will be able to get through the entire time, is our current goal. And more to come on that. Obviously, if we do need to close it, there would be a lot of press and outreach that would come ahead of that. So work, yes, would then extend into kind of September timeframe, at which point the public workshop site work is scheduled to begin right on its heels. We're doing this work now, really, this is most efficient time of year to do this type of work, before the irrigation water turns on, makes that construction more complicated or makes for less favorable ground conditions until we get out of the kind of bottom portions of the site with the fill. This, on this figure, also kind of same, turned on its side, Rio Grande runs right through here. The road embankment and the parking lot areas, for the most part, can get a common fill. So that's reuse of spoils that have come off of city projects recently that we've been stockpiling in anticipation of this project, spoils that'll come off of this summer's street work, right, the roundabout work, which is right down the block, will come over to here in order to utilize those spoils. So you get efficiencies on both projects that way. And then the balance will need to be imported, and will come from a gravel pit south of town. The red shaded area is actually the core structure of the building. That will get an imported structural fill. Nice thing about this site is the underlying soils, once you get through the kind of first couple layer of clays, or some of the berms that were alongside some of the old ditches, you're, you get into good native gravelly river soils, which are great foundation material to build on. And so we'll actually build those, build that whole area to a structural spec, so that the buildings can be placed on, and it'll save, or eliminate the need for deep foundations on the structure itself, which saves, you know, several million dollars when you get into the construction. Yeah, easily, I don't know, probably three, four million, maybe, that you would save on the construction side of things for the building. So great, favorable soils, it's, it's not, very often we get favorable soils in Montrose to put it, to put critical structures on. And then last piece on that is the financial side of things. So the product will generally be managed by the city's engineering department, and then the funding is slated to be part of the certificates of participation borrowing that will be utilized for the public work site. Good way to think, fancy word for a mortgage, that, that, a lot of that'll be paid on, on lending. That'll use the site and its building as collateral. So that is closing in the summer, so in the interim, under the resolution that was passed at the previous meeting, kind of creates a mechanism that we can direct fund these projects, these initial expenditures, using cash reserves from the city's general fund. And then, once that borrowing comes in place, they can be reused to backfill the general fund, and then go straight onto the borrowing after that point, which was expected to happen later this summer. And I think with that, happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions, comments?
No. Thank you, Scott.
If not, we'll take public comment. Has anybody wished to comment on this? Seeing no public comment, I would entertain a motion. Seeing no public comment, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve $4,558,427.31 in expenditures for construction of the public works facility, irrigation relocation, and preliminary site fill project as presented.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, please vote. And that passes unanimously. Moving on to item number nine, city council consideration of the authorization of $2,313,878 for the extension of the existing design contract with Blythe Group for the public works facility and Rio Grande Avenue Design. And for that, our public works director, Mr. Scheid.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. Yeah, this is for a similar project, or actually the same project that Scott was just talking about. We, we've talked about this project at several meetings recently, and we have several more coming. So I'll kind of go over a recap of what's coming next after this one. But this is to amend or extend our design contract with Blythe Group. Blythe Group is the architect of record on the project, which means they've compiled a large team of consultants and, and other architects to ultimately create their design team. This is comprised of Stan Tech Architecture, they're a large architecture firm that specializes in public works facilities, Delmont Consultants, which we work with here locally, as Scott mentioned, on the site fill project, Big Horn Engineering here locally, Lindauer Dunn out of Grand Junction, their structural engineer, Motley Architecture from here in Montrose, and several others that comprise this quite substantially large design team. And we're presenting this recommendation now to continue design work. We've been working through design in 2024. We've reached schematic design level at the, right at the end of this last year. And design would continue through about September of 2025. And it would, at that time, we'd be nearing completion of construction documents. And also, as Scott mentioned, that'd be about the time that we would be moving into construction phase for the facility itself. Again, aligning well with the site fill and irrigation relocation project, this design would, would be completed right around the same time as that project. And as we discussed at work session, the same resolution that would pay, that would allow us to pay for the site fill project would also be utilized to pay for this contract, but is included in what would be a future COP borrowing for the overall project. So this, this contract amount, as well as the site fill, is included in that overall project total. And like I said, this is, this is one recommendation of several associated with this project. Recently, we passed a resolution regarding the funding. But there's, there's more coming. I think that one, the next one we'll be talking about, there's CMGC, that is related to the design contract, because we have recently completed the SD design or schematic design for the project, which allows us to do a cost estimating on the project, which we've completed now. This allows us to, we're going to actually interview CMGC candidates tomorrow, and the next work session will have a recommendation for whom we will select for a CMGC. So you'll be seeing more on this project. CMGC is next. We also have project management consultants that we work with, I'll be bringing those before council. And then the next major one will be that COP borrowing, that we'll be seeing that probably in early February. So more to, more to come on this project, but this design contract extension is, is one piece of it, kind of here at the beginning stages. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, comments, counsel?
Yes, please. Mr. Scheid, I, I know it says here in the fine print, but would you make it clear that this maintenance building for the Recreation District will be paid for by the Recreation District and not the City of Montrose?
Yes, yes, that is a portion of it, we're including our design right now, but we are working closely with the Rec District to, they would, they would be paying their way. So they'd be paying for the design work to be done, and then also for the construction cost of that piece. We are trying, we're finishing design elements right now to where we can establish an IGA between the city and the Rec District, and that would formalize that payment. So, and, and in discussions with their board and with their directors, we're all under that understanding that that's our intention, is to get to the point where we have enough information to create an IGA that we can both formally agree to, and then they would be paying their way, their portion of the design, which is mentioned in this contract separately, it is an amendment to our design contract. And then, of course, the construction costs would be handled that same way, and, and the Rec District would be paying for their, their portion, yes.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments from counsel? If not, is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize $2,313,878 for the extension of the existing design contract with Blythe Group for the public works facility and Rio Grande Avenue Design as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, please vote. And that motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item number 10, city council consideration of the authorization of vehicle and equipment purchases for the total amount of $2,173,795.72. And again, Mr. Scheid.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel. I'm actually going to hand this one over to our fleet superintendent, Shane Brant. He spoke with us at work session, and he can probably explain the details of this much better than I can. So I'm going to step aside and let him handle this one.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. Today, I'm asking you to consider the authorization of vehicle and equipment purchases for the total amount of $2,173,795.72. That's a mouthful. During work session, we kind of dug into the different types of procurement methods we used, so I won't get into the details quite as much here. I'll try to keep it a little more brief. All the following vehicles and equipment purchases that I'm going to go over here are included in the 2025 budget. First, streets, tractor, purchasing from US Tractor here in Montrose. Next, a public works parks and water distribution backhoe and an excavator from Four Rivers Equipment out of Grand Junction. Then we have a public works trash and recycle refuse truck from TransWest out of Grand Junction. A public works streets and wastewater treatment dump truck, so there's two dump trucks there, both from TransWest out of Grand Junction. Police Department patrol, five patrol cars from Ken Garf out of Arapahoe Junction, Utah. Then a public works streets and police admin pickups, so two pickups, from Seltzer Motors out of Brumfield. And finally, for the Black Canyon Golf Course, a groomer and a knife grinder from L.L. Johnson out of Denver. So in total, the purchase price for all these is, once again, $2,173,795.72. And we budgeted $2,203,000. So approving this purchase would create an overall budget savings of $29,204.28. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, counsel, comments?
Yeah, I have a question. I noticed here on the, I can't find it now, on the police vehicles, I know that we were on that, those 14 on previous orders, eight of them are over three years. What's, what's the disposition on all our police vehicles? Could you tell me as to, are we going to see them in the next three years, or are we going to see them 10 years from now? Because if we have a location where there are five police cars that are ready for us, wouldn't it behoove us to go and purchase those extra police cars at this time instead of waiting another three or four or five years to provide our police department with the vehicles that they need?
So the five that they were getting from Utah, they do have in stock, and that's all they have in stock.
Okay, I was just curious about the other ones.
On those ones, they are all, the cars are built, they're waiting for the upfitting up in Denver. Now, we have received two of those cars since we last spoke. So we have two completed out of those eight that we're waiting multiple years on. And then we're expecting another one tomorrow.
Okay.
So they're slowly trickling in from the upfitter.
So, so we're not going to have to wait three or four years to get some more of the vehicles in?
We will not. We'll pick up the cars and take them to Utah to get upfitted if we have to.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from counsel?
Yes, similar question, Shane, about the refuge trucks. We've had this issue in the past years, awaiting many years to get a trash truck delivered to Montrose. How soon will we get this one?
So let's back up and talk about the ones that are coming.
Okay.
Because there's a rumor that there's one in Denver getting ready to come this way. So, exactly. When we see it, we'll all be doing cartwheels and handstands. But this one, they're expecting lead times to shorten quite a bit, and only be about a year out for the one we order right here in 25.
That's better than three years out, I guess.
Yes.
I think that's one of the reasons why we're ordering so many of these in advance, and why we're trying to get ahead of that time curve, because we know that the, the demand for them has been so strange that it's been really difficult for us to actually get the vehicles we've ordered, as my fellow counselors have mentioned. So I think it's, it really is of value to us to go ahead and pull the trigger on these when we have the opportunity to get a good price on them.
Any other questions or comments from counsel? Any public comment? No public comment, I would entertain a motion.
We're waiting for Ed to kind of decide, I can't find it. I would make a motion to authorize vehicle and equipment purchases totaling $2,173,795.72 as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, please vote. And that motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is city council consideration of a change order for the purchase of one main breaker. My computer went down. And ground fault testing from Browns Hill Engineering and Controls for the wastewater treatment plant motor control center project for the total cost of $44,525. And for that, I'll call on our utilities director, Mr. David Breeze.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, we reviewed this some last, a couple weeks ago on Monday. And this is a change order for the Motor Control Center at the wastewater treatment plant. The Motor Control Center is basically the heart of the whole treatment plant. It's where all the electrical components come into the plant and are distributed, all those electrical circuits are distributed out to the various equipment in the wastewater treatment plant. When we started this project back in 2022, we realized there was some long, extremely long lead times. In fact, I think there were 15 to 18-month lead times on much of that electrical equipment. We finally got all of that electrical equipment in and went to, went, started installing it, and had the state electrical inspector to come out and do an inspection. And he identified that the original treatment plant didn't have a main shut-off valve, or main shut-off switch that is required by current electrical codes. Hence another 12 to 13-month lead time for another major electrical component. So Browns Hill was our design contractor that installed, that designed the project, and Sturgeon Electric was the installation contractor. They, Browns Hill ordered the equipment, got the equipment in, worked with Sturgeon to compensate them for the installation of the equipment, and is now coming back to us and saying, can we get compensation for the equipment that we provided? We'll cover the design cost, we'll cover the construction, the installation cost, and is purely asking for cost, reimbursement of the cost for the equipment that we actually have received and is part of our facility at this point in time. We've reviewed that and, and believe that that is a reasonable expectation for them since it would have cost us a whole lot more, it would have cost us design fees, it would have cost us the equipment if that would have been identified prior to it. And we would have had to pay for that installation, which was a fairly significant cost. I believe they estimated, their, their cost was about $45,000 that they are covering. And they are asking us for reimbursement of $40,037 for the equipment, and $4,485 for some third-party ground fault testing that was required by the state electrical inspector for this specific equipment. And with that, I've got Hyrum Webb here from our wastewater treatment plant, if there's any real technical questions, because he is the expert on that, has lived that project the last three years, and, and can answer those questions if there are any.
I wish I knew enough to answer the real technical questions. But does counsel have any questions or comments?
Is it possible simply to have him come to the podium so we can see him and meet him?
Is there any technical information we should know?
I don't think so. My name is Hyrum Webb, I'm the lead operator at the wastewater treatment plant here with the city. I've been here for a little over four years. And as Dave has mentioned, we're going into year three of this electrical upgrade project, and very excited to see it come into a close.
Great. So Hyrum, just for clarification, the project is finished?
It is not. It should be wrapping up in the next couple of months. All the new equipment is installed, they are transferring from the old MCC over to the new MCC, one piece of equipment at a time.
Okay, so it's not finished, but it's going to get closed?
Correct.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Oh, sure.
I have a technical question.
I think Councilman Yuliver has a question.
When, when the electrical inspector inspected it, did he leave any kind of a red tag or something that might impact the use of it until we get it finished?
No. Half of the equipment that is getting replaced has to stay online until the rest of the new equipment can be put in place for the MCC. So we were able to continue operations with our current MCC that had been approved and been online for the past 40 years. So it didn't, it made some inconveniences, but it did not impede operations at the plant or shut any other parts of the process down due to the inspection.
Okay, so currently, we're using the old equipment until we're finished here with, with the new installation of the new stuff?
Correct. We're about 70% of it has swapped over to the new MCC, and we're just using a few of the old breakers on the old MCC. We have to keep every piece of equipment online as much as possible, keep as much redundancies in place as we can through the entirety of the project, hence the need to keep the old MCC in place until the final pieces of the new equipment are installed.
Could you explain what an MCC is?
The Motor Control Center. So it is, when you walk into the room, it has all of the buckets and the panels and breakers going to every piece of equipment in the facility.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before you leave, any other questions or comments?
I'm going to wait till it gets about halfway back, think of something.
I think, I think they're finished with you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any public comment on this? Seeing no public?
The time for coming over here.
There you go. There being no public comment, I would entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve a change order for the purchase of one main breaker and ground fault testing from Browns Hill Engineering and Controls for the wastewater treatment plant motor control center project for the total cost of $44,525 as presented.
Second.
Have a mo- Have a motion and a second, please vote. And that carries unanimously. That takes care of all of our action items for the meeting this evening. The next item of business would be staff reports, do we have any staff reports this No?
I've got one real quick, Mayor. Just want to mention how supportive, how much we appreciate the support from our community and from council itself. Just let everybody know this Thursday is National Law Enforcement Day, the 9th, and just want to pass along our appreciation for all the great support we get.
Thank you. We have two of our youth city councillors with us this evening, Mr. Phillips, Mr. Vidmar, do either of you have anything you'd like to offer?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank counsel for the opportunity for Peter and I to be here, we appreciated it a lot. On behalf of the council, I'd like to share that with the council and the community, the news that the YCC is currently working on our spring project. Unfortunately, I can't share with you any of the specific details at the moment, but I can assure you that what we're working on is very exciting, and we'll have more information for you soon. Peter?
Along with our project, we're also working on a proclamation, a proclamation that we thought would be important, kind of youth-centered, was teen driving safety, just because there are a lot of crashes, like in the Montrose High School parking lot, and so we wanted to really focus on that and make sure that our, our teens in our community are driving safely.
Thank you, excellent.
Also, I'd like to share a little bit about our recent trip to Florida, which some of you may, may have heard about. I don't think I can emphasize enough how important this trip was to the YCC and for our growth as not only leaders, but as knowledgeable, constructive members of this community. I think we learned a lot there about leadership, we also had the opportunity to connect with a lot of people from, from around the country at the National League of Cities Conference, and to hear a lot of different perspectives. Also, I think it was really exciting, we had a, one day that we dedicated to, to a speech and debate competition about city legislature and other important topics, and one of our members, Jordan Simo, actually came in third in that competition, out of hundreds of people from around our country. Along that same vein, we'll also be attending the, a trip to Denver, a legislative trip in April. So again, I'd like to thank you all for, for giving us the opportunity to do things like this.
And thank you for participating, all of you. We'll move on to city council comments, do we have any? Well, seeing, or hearing no city council comments, and the items on the agenda for this evening having been completed, we will stand adjourned.